Okay, all board members being present with the staff indicating they're ready to proceed, I will call the order of the regular business meeting for Monday, December 8th, 2014, of the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners. Ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Commissioner Farrell, would you lead us into place?
Sir, may I stand for please? Let me lead this to the flag in the United States of America and be the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business, then, would be the consent agenda. With consent, we have minutes for the number 24 and the budget calendar for our coming fiscal year 2015. I believe we have, I would like to pull the night as well.
We would like to call the budget calendar for discussion and place that as new business number two.
No objections to that, we'll move that to new business two. Using only the approval of the number 24 now.
I would make a motion that we can approve the minutes with the minor change that we had made replacing the word Hark with Ark and referencing the plasma arc. Thank you.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now opposed, the consent agenda with modifications is approved. And now we need to approve the regular agenda. Any changes to the regular agenda in the board member's staff? I would ask the board to entertain taking the FYI item number one, which is the memo from the Finance Director, Ari Warren, Suwer Analysis Update, and moving that up to old business number five, since we discussed, back when we adopted the budget, we talked about having this discussion at this meeting about the possibility of raising water sewerage. So if there are no objections, I would like to move that Finance Director's memo to old business number five.
Make a motion that we accept the agenda with the modification, taking FYI item number one and placing it as old business number five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now opposed, the agenda with modification is approved. It sounded like I was back in Catholic church that time. Okay, next item is citizen matters. We have two citizens who have signed up to speak. First is Mr. John Alderman and then Diana Hales. Mr. Alderman, before you begin, you indicated here your subject matter is consultants. And I would ask you to, if your intent is to discuss consultants that relate to Chatham Hark, that would not be allowed by our procedural rules. Thank you.
This is an open letter to Mr. Bruce Beck. I own a small, highly qualified, local environmental consulting firm wishing to do business with Pittsburgh. We specialize in completing natural resources investigations such as stream and wetland delineations, endangered species surveys, plant and animal inventories, environmental assessments, biological assessments, environmental impact statements, and applications to state and federal agencies for permits, certifications, and authorizations. Our clients include some of the largest public agencies and private firms, if that's global. We do no engineering, architecture, or land surveying, we call it IELTS work. As you know, according to the Federal Brooks Act and North Carolina State Mini Brooks Act, IELTS contracts require a qualifications-based selection process without competitive bidding on projects. Natural resources investigations performed by Alderman Environmental Services Incorporated are not addressed by these acts. Therefore, in all future selections of contractors needed for natural resources investigations or for assistance in developing documentations needing to acquire state or federal environmental impact authorizations, I request that Pittsburgh require competitive bids for this work. This is America, and I've got plenty to prove that I'm America. It is inappropriate to include this work in contracts to IELTS firms that farm this work out without competition to their hand-selected environmental firms. Local governments facilitating such authorizations or associations not addressed by qualifications-based legislation have no legal grounds of support. In the future, Pittsburgh needs to separate various project contracts into two categories: qualifications-based, essentially based upon the Brooks Act and the State Mini Brooks Act, and competitive bid, which is what I'm after. I want to compete for work. I want to work. By doing so, you will be supporting local, small businesses, and you should receive quality products at reduced cost to taxpayers, which we're all after that. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is newly elected Commissioner Diana Hales. County Commissioner.
Hello, and good evening to Pittsburgh Town Commission. Yes, I am Diana Hales, and I was sworn in a week ago, so this is an opportunity to just come before you as a citizen primarily of Chatham County and a newly elected official, but I'm speaking for myself. And I am speaking here tonight because I know that as we are starting our journey in, after this election, what we must have, and what I know you are all for, is county-town cooperation. And I am just here to state my desire to work very closely with the boards of all the towns, Siler City, Pittsburgh, and Goldston. Because as looking and as I look back at my involvement in government over 20-some years, and that's been state government primarily, is that the issues that are facing Chatham and Pittsburgh are, in fact, very critical issues that everybody is facing right now. Right now, I've become a member of the TARPo, and I guess we'll have a meeting this week or next week about regional planning. And I also noticed on your agenda, you've got the Lake Jordan Partnership, which of course the county is in also. And those are areas that I have particularly a strong interest in with an environmental background and concern over water and wastewater as we move forward in a high-growth area now, and how we are going to try to invest in those infrastructures. I'm also very interested in your work and our work on the county and in Siler City, doing the best we can to protect our water resources. We're not only looking at what are we are going to use, we are looking at the health of our entire ecosystem and community here. One of the things this particular board of commissioners in Chatham County is dedicated to doing is resurrecting the Environmental Review Board. In the past, the Environmental Review Board was part of the planning process and was essential in the subdivision process. That had changed over the last few years, but we are looking at how that will work and getting the citizen and the environmental input on our planning. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm glad to be here, and I hope to see many of you, and all of you, in various formats and at various meetings as we move forward, as we move forward as a county and certainly as Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, let me just turn to the old business, which is presentation of our audit for fiscal year 2013-14.
Good evening. I would like to recognize Jay Sharp. He is with Reeves &amp; Associates. They were the external auditing firm that conducted our audit for fiscal year 2014. You did receive in your packets a draft of the financial statements, and Jay will go through that in a little bit more detail, but you do have the information readily available, and he will be referring to some of the data within your packets. So without further ado, I'll turn things over to Jay from Reeves &amp; Associates.
Good evening. Like I said, my name is Jay Sharp. I'm Senior Audit Manager for the Raleigh Office of Reeves &amp; Associates. Thank you for having me out here tonight. I have a brief presentation to go over the audit and how the audit went this year. Feel free to interrupt me if you have questions, or if you wait until the end of the presentation. First of all, I want to discuss kind of some schematics of the audit. The leadership team this year was the same as last year. Lynn Reeves, the managing partner of the firm, served as the partner in charge of the audit, and I served as the senior auditor in charge of the audit. I kind of did other groundwork. I was out here with the two other staff during October doing the audit for the town. The timeline for the audit, back in April, if I remember, you approved the contract for the audit, and it was submitted to LGC approved during that timeframe. This is the second year where you've done the audit for the town, and we had preliminary, they tried to get out here to do some preliminary work in the springtime, but of course you lost your finance officer back in April, so we were unable to do that this year. We did come out during the end of October and did fieldwork for the audit and completed that during that first, that last week in October. The financial statements were prepared in November, and they were submitted on November 26th, Wednesday before Thanksgiving, a week earlier than last year and before the LGC's deadline. LGC is currently reviewing those, and the audit will be finalized once we receive approval from the LGC for the financial statements. A couple of things I want to go over, and I'll kind of just go hand-in-hand, is the objectives of the audit and the results of the audit. The main objective of the audit is, for us as an audit firm, the reason you hire us is to give an opinion on the financial statements for the town. And you can find this opinion on pages one and two of the financial statements. As last year, you received what we call unmodified opinion, the best possible opinion you can receive on the financial statements. If there's any major problems with the town, this will be the first place you'd see it. But as I said, it's unmodified opinion. There are no extra wording, standard wording for the opinion letter this year for the audit. That's the good news. The second major objective of the audit is to look at internal controls as it relates to financial reporting. We did do so, and as last year, there was one significant deficiency in the segregation of duties. We were hoping to remove that this year, but because of the loss of the finance officer, we were unable to do that. We've discussed matters with Nancy, and hopefully next year we'll be able to remove that finding from the financial statements. But that is one significant efficiency you have on the financial statements this year is segregation of duties. The last objective of the audit is to kind of look at the operations and notice if there's anything that could be done better with the operations of the town financially. You should have a letter with you. There's two letters. One has a date on top, and one doesn't. And one that we'll be looking at right now is the one that does not have a date. This is called a management letter, and it kind of just details out some of our findings during the audit process. All the issues we noted this year are repeat issues from last year. And I think the reason for this, obviously, the board would like to see some of these go away, is because the finance officer left during the year, and so some of these issues were not addressed. And I think they're currently being addressed by the finance officer, but of course Nancy did not start back until August. I'll briefly go over these and remind you of what they were from last year. Accounting policies and procedures manual. The finance officer currently does not have a manual showing how the finance operations are done by the town. And I kind of joked last year, you know, you need to have ones in place in case, you know, Mandy was the finance officer last year. I said, in case she wins the lottery and, you know, leaves, but you know, obviously she did leave the job. So it's very important that the town has this manual in place, so any future finance officer can come in and, you know, start looking at it right off and how the town conducts its accounting. The second one we have is canceling invoices. It's very important that when you pay an invoice, that you cancel it. And as I said, cancel, you know, stamp it paid in order to make sure that invoices are not paid twice. I have seen this happen over audits in the past, and you know, companies or governments have lost money because they paid invoices twice mistakenly. So we have, you know, issues, repeat finding during our disbursement testing, we noted that invoices were not being canceled properly. Capital assets. Currently, the audit firm holds all the fixed assets in depreciation software. We suggest the town do this and have the software capable of doing this. We've already talked to Nancy about this, and she agrees and will be working on this in the future. Personnel files. Some of the testing we do relates to personnel files, relates to payroll. Current files do not have salary rates of town personnel in it, so we cannot do an adequate test of payroll to make sure that the personnel being paid properly by reviewing personnel files. We suggested that this be added to the files last year, and once again, we cannot see that in the files this year, but we've talked to the finance officer, and he'll be working on that in the future. Post-employment benefits, and this is something for the future. Currently, the post-employment benefit liability is immaterial to the financial statements, but as the town grows and as the benefit increases over the future years, this could become a material matter. So we suggest, you know, looking at actuary in the future to determine the exact value. Right now, it is an estimate. The last thing that's not really a finding whatsoever, but just more of a recommendation, has to do with the town's current accounting software. We go to talking to last year's finance officer and this year's finance officer, and actually dealing with the county software itself and trying to extract information from it. That is a very cumbersome software to use and does not give the exact reports needed from a day-to-day operational basis, and we have suggested of looking into switching softwares with the finance officer. But I said that's a future possibility there. The next thing I want to talk about is exactly how the audit went. This was in the other letter dated November 11, 2014. And this letter you will see every year from the audit firm, just telling you, basically telling you how the audit went from our perspective. I'm happy to report that audit went very smoothly. We had complete cooperation from the staff. We had no disagreements with the staff, and we had no difficulties encountered during the audit. Nancy stepped into a difficult situation, obviously, you know, starting back in August and having to deal with auditors a couple of weeks, right, and getting the job, asking her many questions from when, you know, she wasn't even here for the year, she didn't even, wasn't the finance officer. So we've seen complete cooperation, everything went very well from our standpoint. This letter is a standard letter, no modifications to the wording. I want to go over a few brief highlights of the financial statements for June 30th, 2014. The town's total assets, and you can follow along, it starts on page 15 and 16, Statement of Financial Position and Statement of Activities for the town for 2014. Total assets for the town increased for 2014 compared to 2013. It's about $20,000 increase, but still an increase. The town's debt decreased compared to 2013. The town's debt went from about $3.1 million in 2013 to nearly $2.6 million in 2014. So assets slightly up, debt decreasing. So that's good news on both those fronts. The unrestricted fund balance of June 30th, 2014 was just over $4 million compared to just about $3.6 million in 2013. Important thing to note, the reserves from unrestricted fund balance totaled about 246 days. So if for whatever reason the town had received no additional money as of June 30th, 2014, you could continue operating based on unrestricted fund balance for 246 days. This is very good for municipality, very good for any government agency, so you're well, you're well over half a year, which we like to see. Good news there. Total expenses in 2014 were just slightly over $6 million compared to just slightly under $6 million in 2013. The cost of operating the town in 2014 was about $16,600 per day compared to about $16,400 per day in 2013, so slight increase. The change in net position in 2014, this is basically a profit or loss, was $560,000 total compared to about $960,000 total in 2013. Slight decrease. Major reason for that is last year you did receive a grant from the Department of Commerce relating to the Hillsborough Street line, and that grant was a one-time grant, and that was about $850,000. The cash balance of June 30th, 2014 was just slightly over $5.6 million compared to just slightly over $5 million last year. So the profits continued, and cash balance increased about $600,000 during the year. Your capital asset total went down slightly compared to 2013. The reason for this was depreciation. You did have about $400,000 in net position in fixed assets during the year, but your appreciation was greater than that. Change in long-term debt. You continue to pay off debt, decreased $436,000 during 2013-14, but you did not take on any new debt during that time period. So your debt did decrease, part of the reason your overall liability decreased during the year. That is all I have. I'd be glad to entertain any questions.
Any questions from the board? I read through the audit and very clearly stated that most of the good news, so I don't have any questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And brings us to our next item is rezoning request for Pittsburgh Ford. Fast, you want to lead this one?
This is rezoning request 2014-03, Pittsburgh Ford, Voyette Nelson LLC is proposing to rezone approximately 1.3 acres adjacent to the existing Pittsburgh Ford dealership from RA, residential agricultural to C2, highway commercial. A public hearing was conducted on November 24th, 2014, and you have there in your packet motions to approve and or motions to deny. And according to the board's information, we did receive a valid petition for annexation.
Is that for just this property or for the combined properties of Pittsburgh?
Pittsburgh Ford's inside, yes, so this is just for the decked-up property.
Any questions from the board? Is your bill for your notes I have in here?
I have one question. On the street, just going back to the neighbors, we split the block, correct? And I guess this is to Mr. Nelson, more or less. Is there a possibility, if when you, now in the future, if you decide to put a lot on both sides of that street, to move that road closer to the more property and maybe horseshoe the road back in there, or your lot would be together?
Yeah, yeah, I consider that. It, right now, it's straight down, and there'll always be plenty of access for them, two cars, but if, you know, looking at it, you could horseshoe it, come out, either way would be fine.
I was just, you know, concerned possibly about the tenants, you know, the people living in the back, and it may make your lot a little more addressing and having a road through the middle of it.
Yeah.
Also with the tree buffer too, right?
Yeah, well, I put trees down the buffer on the right side, so, yeah, I could, you know, we could horseshoe it.
We have a group that you could entertain later on, right?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Either way, it would, you know, we can keep it together, run that road on the right side, you know, either way would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I can tell you.
While we're on the circuit of the roads, do we know whether or not there's a, is there a recorded easement that shows that gravel road, or is that just a road that's...
It's a recorded easement. It's a private easement.
So the road between the two parcels is...
It's on a plan, yes, sir.
For which property? I guess the newly acquired property is where the road is.
Yeah, and then it goes back.
And it's a private road?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Not a town road?
That's right.
And are there any...
Do we have any utilities run down that road?
Yes, sir, apparently. The different systems have water and sewer.
One of the questions I wrote down for myself is if there's a, there, this is another one of those instances that we ran into in a previous rezoning request where we have houses, houses that are, homes that are isolated and landlocked from any town street. Apparently, we have one with some here that are served by town utilities that go down this combined street easement and utility easement. Because I don't know what the future intention of the town would be about, if we, if we already have a utility easement and not a...
I don't think we do. I think it's just a private, I might say. Tap into the name there, the road.
So the water beener is up at the front of the roadway, and beyond that is...
I'm assuming that. I don't know that for a fact, but that's what I think.
I've seen that happen before. There's a three-quarter inch line that goes from Thompson Street to back, and any maintenance of that line is the owner's responsibility.
Right.
That's not an ideal situation, but that's, that's what we, doesn't target and dealt with. Okay.
Now, there are two parcels behind this lot served by that access easement.
Yes, sir.
Do both parcels have water and...
Well, not, not the one that's the furthest away, just the immediate parcel adjacent to the, to the property that's under the quest.
And is it gravity shower, or is there a pump and all?
I just have a question about the tree buffer. Is that something that needs to be a part, if we were to approve this, that, does that need to be a part of the wording, the tree buffer? Can we make that part of the...
I'd probably defer to Mr. Messick, but this is a straight rezoning, not a conditional rezoning. We do have some standards as far as development with, you know, commercial property being developed adjacent to residential, there are some buffer requirements now.
That would buffer the parcels to the rear that are the residential use.
Right.
And parcels to the east, which are residential uses as well, but wouldn't do much for the driveway. And I share Commissioner Farrell's concern about the driveway and access and not having an individual have to drive through what I expect to be a dealership lot to go to my home. And I'd like for it to function more as a residential driveway, so perhaps relocation is a great idea, but if it isn't relocated, I'd sure like to, when the site plan comes in, see, you know, attempt for buffering and providing for a residential feel to that access point. see, you know, attempt for buffering and providing for a residential feel to that access point.
Yeah, a comment I had about the tree buffering is Mr. Nelson seems willing to do that. And some of the correspondence we get from nearby residents ask questions about, well, what happens if the land should transfer to a future owner? And I don't think a simple rezoning would require a future owner to respect those trees. They could come down if they wanted. It's their property, their trees.
Well, as long as it's too distinct, you know, zoning districts are commercial adjacent to residential, there is a buffer requirement. That's just part of the rezoning and site plan.
I wonder if the adjacent neighbor would rather have the trees on their property. Guaranteed to future existence. Well, it's a negotiation between the two property owners. The town can't require it, I don't think, in a rezoning. It just occurred to me, if I was the property owner, I wanted to assure the long-term existence of those trees, I might want to negotiate with Mr. Nelson, have him put on my side of the property line so that I didn't have to refight this battle thirty years from now. Pittsburgh Ford outgrows the lot and moves some other place because they're so widely successful.
We definitely put trees down that side. Yeah, we definitely do that.
So, Mr. Nelson, so you've spoken to all of those individuals?
Yes.
And they have agreed to, and you told them that you had?
Shirley's the one that wrote the letter, and she visited with me Friday. And that's why I said we would definitely put the trees down that property line. That was her biggest request.
Yes.
And as it sits now, you agree to put them on your property?
Yes. Yeah, we put on our property going down. So it would give her even more buffer, you know. I would put them down on our line, our property line. And so it would block, she would have tree, just looking trees.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Of course, that keeps her a lot larger than if she puts trees on her side of the?
And we've made the road better already as far as more rock and gravel. Some points we've paved, but for them, you're talking about the access for them. It's always been a road that gets muddy, it rains and stuff. So we've already added rock to improve that for them.
Any other questions from the board? I want to make sure I clearly understand that Mr. Nelson's agreement to plant the trees is not a part of this rezoning. He's expressing some cooperation there.
That's correct.
And his willingness to improve the road or move the road is not contingent upon the rezoning. It's not contingent upon that. He's again expressing willingness to do that, but who will? This doesn't mind him to do that.
That's right. That's correct.
Let me try to. Okay, no more questions. You have a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve and award an ordinance and then amending the zoning ordinance in the zoning act of town Pittsburgh, case REZ-2014-03.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, the petition for rezoning is approved. Thank you. Brings us to old business number three, rezoning request for Chatham Park PDD, rezoning 2014-2. Mr. Bass, can I lead this one?
Yes, sir. Very briefly, this is rezoning request 2014-04, Chatham Park LLC, planned development district with the master plan. And the proposal is adding approximately 46 acres to previously approved planned development district that was approved this past June 9th, 2014. Listed there, the separate parcels. There have also been some tax changes, which would have been incorporated into the master plan primarily in chapters or articles eight and 10. And just a point of clarification, this request affects the entire assemblage, the entire land area that was rezoned in June and is approved and rezoned and superseded the June 9th approval. And a public hearing was conducted on November 24th.
Anything further, Ed? No, okay. Questions from the board?
I just have an issue I'd like to bring up. I'd like to see the board revisit something that we both done last time, and that is the issue about whether or not greenways count as parks or as transportation. I'd like to propose that we count those as transportation for several reasons. One of them is that it's my understanding that it was considered part of the transportation system that the project is available for grant funding as far as the basis goes. And also, the Chatham Park concept is that people are supposed to live, work, and play. And so the greenways are going to serve as a method for people to get to work, to get to restaurants, to get to shopping. People will be riding their bicycles. When you read, when I was reading over what this information that was given to us from the PDD, on page 30 of our amended plan, it talks about how the greenways are going to be mixed for bicycles and pedestrians. But I think it's mainly seen as a support network for bicycles. And it says here, support the use of bicycles as an alternative means of transportation. The DOT considers bike lanes in the field of transportation, as in fact, they help fund bike lanes. So to me, this is more of a transport, part of the transportation network, and so it just works and works. And also, I think one of the concerns I've had from the beginning is that there's not enough, considering how much density Chatham Park is getting, I feel that we haven't really set aside enough open space. By making this part of our recreation, it takes away from how the parks will happen in the development. And if we count as transportation, it doesn't reduce the amount of parks, the park space, a lot of the park space. Also, I noticed on the maps of the greenways, quite a few, quite a bit of them are actually along the roadways, which is really like a sidewalk. It's just it's a greenway because it connects with the other parks. And yet, the town considers sidewalks as part of the transportation, as covered under DOT things. So I would like to propose that we reconsider that decision to make that part of parks and recreations and make it more of a transportation, as part of the transportation network of Chatham Park. Another reason for this would be it's part of the transportation network. That funding will help comfort Chatham Park and not just from our taxpayers. It's also protection for people of Pittsburgh. But I'd be interested in hearing everyone else's thoughts. I just have something that's been bothering me since the vote before.
So, Beth, do you have a specific language change that you recommend?
It's really more of a designation. I mean, maybe Brian can help with this.
Yeah, she's working on it.
Or is Paul born here, perhaps? When we voted on this before, it was really more of a designation about whether it would be considered, whether the greenways are considered part of the parks or recreation or part of the transportation plan. And I was just suggesting that we make that part of transportation and not make it part of our parks a lot more.
Okay, I think I understand what you're saying, but if the board agrees with you, you would need to parse out what pages of the master plan you relate to that and what specific language changes.
It's very simple. It's just a matter of designation.
Well, I think that the greenways do have a transportation component to them, but I also think of them more as a recreational use, so that's my personal opinion. And as far, I think I, part of your point was funding or construction of them. Is that correct? And I think this document clearly states that Chatham Park will be constructional.
It's for maintenance. You're going to get grants to help maintain them.
Right. And, well, I think, I don't know if there are grants that won't provide for maintenance costs supremely, but because of the recreational feature, I know we get grants for recreational purposes periodically, so.
But I think that these trails are also going to be used a lot by commuters. I mean, that's what Chatham Park is saying, that you'll be able to bike to work, you'll be able to lap to shopping. And I do think that the greenways are going to be used a lot by commuters. It's going to help reduce traffic in the morning for pedestrians. That would be a big appeal of this development, that people will be able to ride their bikes to work, ride their bikes to shopping. And that's it. It is going to be a transportation option for people. As the way of getting from point A to point B, it's not just going to be recreation. It's going to be very functional, it's going to be a way. And really, a big piece of it is, we have such a really small amount of area that's been designated for open space. And if we count the greenways as part of open space, it just reduces the amount of parks that we have for the community and conservation area for the community. So to me, this is a really important designation. It's going to add up as far as space, though. Because to me, same stuff. I'd like to say the DOT considers bike lanes as transportation. And so many of these, when you look at them, which it really is a lot of them. And a lot of these, if you look at the map, a lot of these greenways are just off the road. They're really in essence sidewalks. And we don't count sidewalks as recreation, so why should it be called called greenways that follow the road exactly like a sidewalk? Why should that be called recreation? It's transportation. It's to encourage people to walk and to ride their bikes.
I believe also that the network of roadways that this project will contribute to are the DCDOT standards for complete streets, which include sidewalks in light areas as well. So when I see a bike lane in the public right of way, I definitely think of that as a transportation component. When I think of a bike lane outside of the public right of way, even if it is perhaps parallel to the roadway, I do think of it as a greenway. And I do associate greenways with recreation. We may have a group.
Again, the purpose of the greenways at Chatham Park is to connect people to their workplace and to shopping. So I think with this new concept, it's so much more of recreation than, and yet, to a kind of parks, there's people that have more public park space. It's just a simple thing. By counting this as park, as community parks, it lessens the amount of public parks for our community. Count it to transportation, it did, they did the bike lanes and it's a lot of them.
So can we, can we sort of poll the board and see if we have a consensus on Commissioner Foley's suggestion here? Seems reasonable to me. Not sure where in the document it would execute that change. Is that something?
You have a question from the Alca?
Certainly. You have questions with the Alca, if you can ask?
Howard?
If anybody from Chatham Park's in there, can you answer this? Before you do that, what percentages are, you say, that want the percentage to change in reference to the amount of greenways? They need to know how much was designated as greenways before we could make a change in terms of that. So how much is indicated here as noted as greenways?
I'm not sure of the amount, but to me, I don't think it really matters because it would just, whatever it is, it's just a matter of changing the designation from.
But I need to know how much?
Maybe it's the current interest of us. I don't know if that would be the case, but it's significant.
Hey, this is a problem. I have the knowledge, it's not true. It's a regulation. We have to get some time, but they're not. I understand that's because it was considered history and history and program. It's certainly a way to hold this as false. It's not based on facts or the law because the history of the town doesn't have. You can just come up with something wrong. Change that.
As Beth's saying. Get a vote on that.
Yeah, well, now's not the time to do it, though.
If you don't mind me just speaking, I can, but first, I have calculations of what percentage of the breakout. To, I probably have to cover this whole up on that breakout, we should mention that from a practical standpoint, from how we approach it at an internal level, how we would approach this question. The greenways that we have currently are all within our parks. They're all covered in allocations to parks, apartment, maintenance, upkeep. Any expansion, any improvements, any betterments are all covered within parks. We have, obviously, transportation that occurs along Rice Road. And those rest of sidewalk, we're engaged in Royal, let's say, and a couple of different sidewalk projects are now. Those are literally considered transportation projects, if not because we're funding them with the power bill fund and not necessarily parks fund. So I wouldn't really approach, I wouldn't approach all the pedestrian and bicycle traffic as greenway traffic per se. That's the current view. How can you handle it? As far as how Chatham Park would approach it in the future, I think it would be, I think probably within certain areas and within certain park improvements, they're considering those betterments within parks and rec. I think within the comprehensive transportation plan and within, within the full, within the comprehensive pedestrian street plan. The DOT would require, maybe we consider those to be transportation elements and fundable on things like power grants and other transportation has to fund it. They're probably separate from recreation, so. How that changes our green space and how we allocate green space is uncoverable. That's the only thing we showed up in the way on how currently we're breaking those out.
I'm sorry, could I ask you one little question in a second? Now, back to the power plant. If it were considered transportation, would that be eligible, would the greenways be eligible for coverage under the power plant?
Only if it was within a street right of way. If it's not in a street right of way.
Only if the state allows it, because it's not the law.
But it's my understanding that the greenways, the ways that the board voted for, the amount that the land that it takes to have the greenways, it's going to be deducted. the amount, that the land that it takes to have the greenways, is going to be deducted from the public park space, is that correct? So there will be that much less public park space than what happens part of the allotment?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it might be characterizing it more as it's considered part of greenland space rather than it's a public.
Well, it's my understanding, it would be reduced from the park allotment. Chatham Park has held to a particular amount of park allotment, and it would be deducted from that park allotment. So it would actually reduce the number of park space that we would have.
Well, I think the document says that it is credited towards recreation, as it is. Considered, that's how it's written, it's considered part of parks. So there is a certain amount of recreation space to be provided, we just would count against that recreation space. Depends on the length of it, I think it's calculated on the width of the facility and the corresponding easement. And I don't think easement width is defined, we're just talking about the greenways being ten foot wide asphalt. So, you know, reasonable width would be five feet either side of that for maintenance and those types of issues, so. Could be a twenty foot wide quarter.
It'll add up to a lot that we would lose in park space.
I would suggest that you gain it in park space as part of the greenway system. And the question of maintenance, we intend to maintain just greenways ourselves.
But it's true, I mean, it's, it's deducted from.
Not deducted, it is part of the parkland formula that was included. And, and I know of no case where we had a separate vote on that particular item. It's hard to take this document and pull a piece out. This parkland, is, part of the parkland is greenway. And we believe that it is accurately addressed and adequately addressed in the document. We will maintain the greenways. We will maintain the facilities there, we will maintain the open space and large portions, some of it will become public parkland. If you take a public park and turn it into a baseball field, you would not say that you deducted from the parkland to turn it into another unit.
Right.
The greenway is one of the many.
Okay, so maybe deductive sounds negative, but it, it was part of the allotment, it would take up part of the allotment that, that Chatham Park has been required to provide as part of.
And what we propose is to state that at least how much we will put in, that is not the limit, to say that we will put no more. We could end up with more green space, more open space, more parkland than what we have required nowadays.
But it's true that this, the greenways would count as part of your allotment? Okay, so that's my point.
It would, and we believe that that is correct, and we would, we would hold to that standard, that is the standard that we're presenting.
I just want to point out to the board that if, if this is designated as transportation, we still have bike lanes, the bike lanes, but, and we also, in addition, would have park space. So that's, my point is, this is going to be deducted from the allocation of park space, simply because we designated park space instead of transportation. And I think there's never, we haven't had a community like this built, and I think it's, more communities are built like this, that bike lanes will be considered transportation because it's going, it's going to be, people will be driving their bikes to work.
But it's not public transportation, it's not a public bike lane. Unless it is a public bike lane, it's a public green lane, then it's not going to be eligible to your power, it's going to be eligible.
That's not the only point here, the point is, it would be, it would be the allocation, it would be taken out from the allocation of parks in town.
Do you know the estimated length of the greenway that's not associated with a public roadway on this map?
I do not have a useful calculation.
And when we look at this map, there are two designations. One item in the legend is called an on-street connection. The other is a greenway trail reservation.
Yes, sir.
And I read that to mean the on-street connection is not part of a greenway, nor is, nor is it credited towards recreation.
I agree, yes, sir.
Only the greenway trail reservations.
Yes, sir. Where, 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 where on-street, it's an upgraded sidewalk. It makes connections to greenways, but it's still a sidewalk.
But it's a sidewalk.
And we wouldn't be wanting to do a sidewalk in a greenway, it would be the greenway that would replace a sidewalk along the road.
So those sidewalks that are replacing the greenway, does that count towards your allocations of park?
Excuse me?
I just want to be clear, so those, the greenways that are adjacent to St. Street, basically, they're nice sidewalks. So you're saying that that would not count as part of your park designation?
I would think that might be some case where it would, but we would be presenting to use that and say, this is the land we propose to be part of the park, just as all other land that has to be considered suitable and acceptable to be open space or parkland. But there are cases where something might be. I, I, I don't know that I have a definitive line, that I can say this would be part and this would not. But you will be in the process of reviewing and approving those areas that become part of what is acceptable, parkland or what is acceptable.
Sounds to me like we would be counting, like sidewalks as part of our parks, is that what we want? Sidewalks are definitely considered transportation?
Yes, sidewalks, sidewalks are sidewalks that are required, they're not counted against anything.
And yet, some of these are the same as sidewalks, it's just you're calling greenways, but they're.
I was saying, I was saying, as Commissioner Bielko had mentioned, there's certain amounts of space that might be beside a greenway. That it might be twenty-five feet, the cause of the slope or something like this. And it might be a topic to be part of the greenway or the open space that's beside it. That's all I was trying to say, is not to be, that no land beside a road could be parkland, no, it could be. It might be the best choice of the land to have that on the side of the road or beside a sidewalk or beside a on-street greenway, be part of the park, or part of open space. But that will have to bring you down to you for your, especially with parkland, the town has to accept the parkland.
Well, I guess I, I think of it as a sidewalk typically being, let's say, five foot wide concrete, associated with perp gutter, three foot over ashtray, it's got a swell, then it's going to meander, but it's basically going to be within the public roadway.
Yes.
And it's going to be publicly maintained, part of the roadway system. You're talking about some of these connections, and what I hear you saying is, the character of the greenway, which is described as about a ten foot wide asphalt path.
Yes, sir.
Now, when it joins that sidewalk, it goes from what we would call a sidewalk to a multimodal path. But if it's in the public roadway, I don't see that counting as recreation. It's an improved multimodal path, so that, so it's traveling long, but it is not counting toward recreation.
No, it's, it's transportation, that's for transportation, yes, sir.
I think it'd be a simple decision to say that the bike, the greenway are the transportation network, and then we would not have to reduce our allocation for parks. They're already small.
We do not believe that the allocations of the parks in any way, shape, or form is small. It is a very high percent.
It is my concern, isn't it? Chatham Park has been branded a great deal of density, and in exchange for the density, they expect, my expectation was that there would be greater proportion of natural space and park space. And really, what you're doing is more typical, it's not exceptional. And to me, I would expect more in exchange for the great deal of density that you're getting itself, and I'm not seeing it.
Okay, I think, I think Commissioner Foley's made her, her intention clear. When you call it a deduction for park space or a credit for park space, I think where that leaves us is if, if the board is in support of her proposal to characterize greenways as transportation rather than a credit to or deduction from park space, then what we would need to do is, I don't think we can do it on the fly, we would need to find the text in the document that relates to that and proposes a specific language change, and I don't know if we can do it on the fly tonight. If the board is in agreement with Commissioner Foley, we would need, we would need to take time to look through the documented by that word. The text should be changed to effect that change. So what's the role of the board, or do we want to take the time to do that? Or are we happy with the characterization of greenways as a credit toward the requirement for park space? Pull the board. Commissioner Farrell, where do you?
I see, I see both sides, man. I feel comfortable how it is in the plan.
Okay, Commissioner Foley's made her position clear, Commissioner.
I associate greenways with recreation, use them as such, and I know there's another component to them that get me from point A to B, and there will be those who take advantage of that, but I really think it is more appropriate as a recreational entity.
Commissioner.
Well, basically, I do understand in reference to the greenways and that taking account toward the parks. But my question is also, when we get the site plan, if we decide that we don't want to call that or consider that as a greenway and count that toward parkland, can we not say that?
I think you have the ability to do that at that point.
Because, and that way, that, if we don't want to call it that, then we don't have to call it that, we can consider that as transportation. Is that not correct? So basically, I think we can leave it as, as it is. And, but I do have one other question in reference to the management of the greenways. It's indicated in here that if it is transferred to a private entity, that that particular private entity, including the town or whomever, would be the individuals that would be taking care of those greenways.
The question would be at that point whether, when we offered, say, a particular segment to the town, that you would be taking over the maintenance, that it would come in public, greenway. We believe that the vast majority of the greenways, we will continue to keep, we will continue to operate. We just felt it was important to make it available to the town if they said that they wanted this section to be part of the town's system. That can happen also, but our intention is to maintain these areas ourselves and not put the burden of that maintenance on the town.
And those qualifying greenways would have no restriction whatsoever on public access?
No, sir, not at all.
Mr. Turner?
I agree with Commissioner Farrell, I can see both sides, but I also agree with Commissioner Morgan, I think that they were, we're going to decide individually at some point what's acceptable and what's not, so.
Okay, appears that the consensus of the board is that characterizing greenways as credit for park spaces. Well, I know that as we review site plans, we may make requests that the developer reconsider some areas. Anybody want to open another topic? While y'all are kind of flicking, I do have a change I would like to make on page fifty. Been marked up, copy of the document we provided. At the top of the page, paragraph two, it says, "Within two years following final non-appiable approval of Chatham Park PDD zoning and master plan, applicant working cooperatively with the town will submit for consideration by the town a development agreement in accordance with section 168-400 dot 20 et cetera of North Carolina general statutes. Any conflict between the master plan and the items of development agreement agreed to by the applicant in the town shall be controlled by the development agreement." I'm not happy with that arrangement, and I think it should be reversed and read as follows. "Within two years following final non-appiable approval of the Chatham Park PDD zoning and master plan, the town, working cooperatively with the applicant, will negotiate and execute the development agreement in accordance with section 168 dash 400 dot 20 et cetera of North Carolina general statutes." I don't think we want the applicant to write the development agreement and then give us an opportunity to redline and make marginal changes. I think the town ought to take the lead in writing that and hire, if we can't do it with in-house resources, I think we ought to hire a qualified consultant to assist us in that endeavor.
I agree, I do feel that this is something that the town should create, not, because the PDD zoning was done by Chatham Park, and I think it ends up, instead of coming from a place of what the town sees as most important, it ends up being us just making little changes to theirs, and I think it's important that we maintain that ability to do that. I thought the town would do it too, actually. And you guys had said that at one point, so.
Well, I, I don't think it's really accurate to characterize the town's role as red marking an agreement. An agreement is where two parties agree. If they don't agree, there is no agreement, and, I mean, we are going to invest the time and energy, we're going to hire consultants if we need to, to go outside of our resources. But somebody's got to take the first step in creating the document. And I don't object to the applicant making that first representation as to an agreement that we can respond to as those two, the town generated, using our resources to generate the first draft. So I, I don't think it's accurate to say that we would have limited ability to amend an agreement in any way, shape, or form.
I'm not, I'm not questioning our ability to amend the agreement, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, I want a, I want a starting point, a development agreement that, that focuses to protect the citizens of town, Pittsburgh, and the best interests of the taxpayers of town, Pittsburgh. Please don't. Not necessarily, if you do it the other way around, what you get is a, a development agreement whose primary purpose is to protect the best interests of the developer. And those, if you put those two documents side by side, they will look remarkably different. I'm just saying, let's start with the one that's closer to what we want to be the end product.
Well, that's what I thought we'd agree on, as a collaborative process, but.
There was, there was an extensive discussion on the previous meetings, and the wording that you see here was the wording that was agreed to at that meeting and that cooperatively with the board that was placed in there. We're talking about a development agreement that's a legal document between two parties. There is no case where the town can be forced to sign anything that they don't want to sign or to go into an agreement that they don't want to go into. We feel like it does need to be, we understood that the mayor and other members felt like they wanted more cooperation. That's what we tried to address here, we need, somebody needs to start this. And we have said that we will start it, but it is a cooperative process that is, is equal between parties because both parties have to agree to the final document. parties have to agree to the final document.
I think if I may too, and this, this was discussed at previous meetings, but whether we begin, meaning the town, whether the town takes the first step or whether, um, Chatham Park investors take the first step, it's potato-tatowin' way because if, if we take the first step, they in turn will be taking measures to make sure that, that it cooperatively works to them. Um, and I'm not seeing a difference between who begins. We're all down the same, what is it, have, have, we're on the same page before it's developed. So, and however, I completely agree with you, and I, I, wearing the town's hat, we can certainly take the first crack on it, but there again, just like we can change, they could, they could have enough to get them to follow.
I expect that they would. I'd just like to start from the town's point of view. Sounds to me like we have a consensus from the board that, uh, that we would like to ask for that change.
Different kind of question, Mr. Mayor. We did, um, go this route and assume the town taking it all first. Would, um, will we go back to the Lawrence group or Clarion group, or will we just have a set, a separate contractor consultant to handle this?
I think we could, we can instruct the manager to go any number of ways. I think, uh, it's a significant piece of work, uh, either the Lawrence group or Clarion group could do it, or third group. Uh, I think it's a large enough piece of work that, uh, we would probably instruct the manager to, uh, put out a request for qualifications and, uh, you know, Clarion would be welcome to apply for it, Lawrence group would be welcome to apply for it, and any of the others that, uh, suck to help us with this project in the past would also be, uh, welcome to respond to the RFQ.
Just, Mayor, may I just interject here? This language in this particular section is part of a requirement on the part of the developer to do certain things. The two-year, uh, period of time is where they're supposed to provide these additional elements. This mass, this development agreement is the same sort of thing. It is an obligation on their part, the town is imposing, that they've got to come up with the information that will be necessary to submit a proposed development agreement. That's going to, excuse me, that's going to depend on their projections of capacity needs and, and all sorts of things like that, that we cannot, you can have a sample development agreement if you want to, but without their information about what their needs are, it's going to be impossible to do it. This is an obligation, I mean, you're, you're letting them off the hook essentially by saying that we're going to come up with a development agreement. And, and it really, uh, is contrary to what we've been talking about all along, that this is an obligation on their part to come up with what they think they need. The town to agree or reject it or come up with its own plan. Um, and the process by which you do that is, of course, entirely different matter altogether, but they don't have anything to deal with. But I, I do think you're, you're, you say the town has to do something within two years, they, they don't have to do anything until you sit back. So obligation is on their part now, under this language.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I, I, I understand what your interests are, and I think it's not who makes the first step. We need to take this step together. It's not us responding to your document or y'all responding to our document. It's us generating this document in a workshop. Mr. Bruce Beck, we talked about this the way it's packed, that the way this document has to be formed is you put the elements down that are important to the town, important to the developer agreement to function, and step by step, we'll get to where we know whether it's a consultant that the town desires to have assistance with, or whether we say, here's a draft of what we've done in our workshops that are elements that are important to both parties. We're not trying to take the ball and run with it. As Mr. Messick said, this was a requirement that we had. The method of how we get to a developer agreement, our spirit of doing it as a team effort is where we first and foremost in trying to end up with a document that works.
Okay, I appreciate that. And, uh, in the spirit of cooperation, I would suggest that, uh, you might reach out and agree to the change that we proposed here.
I'm not sure I understand exactly what to change.
Well, I can read to you.
Okay.
"Within two years following final non-appealable approval of the Chatham Park PDD zoning master plan, the town, working cooperatively with the applicant, will negotiate and execute a development agreement in accordance with section one sixty-eight dash four hundred dot twenty at SEC of North Carolina general statutes." That's different from the text that's in there now. Reverses the responsibility.
It does reverse the obligation, and it obligates the town to spend its tax revenue in developing an agreement.
Yeah, I want that responsibility.
It seems to me, Mr. Mayor, it's very difficult to say, shall negotiate and execute. We hope we reach agreement, but we have no assurance. Anytime you talk about an agreement, that requires a meeting of minds, and you have no assurance that that will occur. It's got to be cooperative.
Well, that's true in either case, whether you present the first draft or we present the first draft.
But you can't, I, I, I mean, the, the general statutes don't require it to be in a project. It's a consensual thing between the municipality and the developer. We certainly hope, and it's our duty, that we reach consensus. And, but it, it's like someone said, it really doesn't matter who proposes the first draft.
Well, good, then just let us do it.
As long as it's understood and it's going to be in negotiation, and the mayor may not reach agreement.
I think that's understood whoever starts it. Like you said, I want the town to have the responsibility to do the initial draft.
Mayor, I have to ask, is the town suggesting that you can meet the deadline identified in this? I mean, the deadline, and this was imposed on us for it to happen within two years. Now we're talking about the town having a deadline to meet our requirements. There are other standards we have, we have applied to us that say we must have this development agreement in place within a certain amount of time.
Well, what it says is that you get two years to finalize the master plan, and after that, we begin work on development.
There is other language in this text that binds us to the, and have the development agreement in place.
Let's fix that, too?
Uh, we don't have anything.
Cooperative and how it is paid.
You have a difference of opinion here.
I have one question, um, regarding the two years. Um, is that from June, the first agreement, or is that from possibly tonight?
It would be from tonight. If we adopt this amendment, this language is associated with this amendment. So.
Every time, every time Chatham Park asks something, the two years gets pushed back again, again, again. So this could happen for eternity.
The, the two years could go on for eternity, and the restriction on land development would be valid as well. Five percent residential, fifteen percent commercial, or torn down.
But it says, "Within two years following final non-appealable approval of Chatham Park PDD zoning." So, uh, if "non-appealable" is a reference to our ongoing court case, does, does the clock start when the, uh, court case is finally adjudicated?
Yes.
Okay. So that's when the clock starts.
This would be a brand-new approval. Wouldn't there need to be a new appeal to this approval?
Could be. Depends on how it plays out, yeah.
But this, this development agreement was just like one of the additional elements. And we said, developer, you must perform. You, just like all the additional elements, you come up with a stormwater plan, you come up with a master public facilities plan, you come up with a public art plan, a affordable housing plan, a stormwater manual. You produce these documents that the town will review and approve. This is just another one of those items. We need to keep them on the book for performing, not put the performance, um, requirement on the town. They must present these things to us, and that doesn't say that we're going to have an agreement. It says you have to produce it for the possibility of having an agreement.
And we will make every effort to make sure that agreement happens. That was the whole cooperative effort that we, knows we need that agreement.
I disagree, Commissioner Guko, that it's just another element of the master plan, that the development agreement is, is far more impactful than just another section of the master plan.
I think it's mistaken. The PDD ordinance didn't come from us in the first place because it has, um, it's very vague. It's, you know, to get straight, they didn't do it, it doesn't sound like how that happened. I think it was potentially, I think, or, I think it come from them.
There are so many different ways that a tax amendment to the ordinance can occur. The town can initiate it, but citizens can initiate it as well. And that's what happened with the PDD. Citizens initiated a tax amendment to our ordinance, and we worked with them and we adopted it. I'll put it on the sidebar.
Okay, I don't want to chew on this bone all night long, but I think the consensus of the board is that, uh, the change I proposed has the support of the board.
Where's the vote?
I have to say something like that.
I've heard from Mr. Messick and all. I still think we should leave it as it is and having the applicant working cooperatively
with the town, as it is wrote right here. Because that is a very large undertaking for us to get in it. It looks, which is, the management staff.
The interpretation missing for us is.
Whether you like it or not, I mean, tell the citizen what you're saying.
Well, I think the problem lies in that it appears, or it seems as if Chatham Park is actually the one that's going to control this and try to control what the town is going to do. I think that's what, uh, people are, you know, best, or insinuating, that that will be the case. But I don't know if that's necessarily the case, just because, because those are things with Chatham Park has to do within two years. If they don't do it, then we can't go forward with what we're trying to do, a development agreement. So I think what seems to be, what we're hearing, or what I think I'm hearing, is that some are thinking that Chatham Park will just do this without the approval or the consideration of the town and their, and their expertise in reference to it. That's what I'm hearing.
Mr. Mayor, we, we would certainly consider something like, within two years following final non-appealable approval of the Chatham Park PDD zoning and master plan, the town will propose a development agreement for review and consideration by the applicant and the town.
Okay. That's essentially what I thought I said.
And that, that, of course, is within two years following this non-appealable period. The town, the town will provide a draft.
I don't want to do that. I do not want the emphasis on us to create the first document. We don't have the information, and I don't want the emphasis on the developer to perform.
And that's acceptable to us, too. I mean, we can go, we can go any way.
I don't want to create an affordable housing plan. I don't want to create a stormwater plan. I don't want to create those plans. I want to consult on those plans.
Not suggesting that we would.
But this is simply one of those elements that in exchange for this agreement, they must perform. I want them to perform. I don't want the emphasis on us. I don't want it on us.
Now, as we move this over, I think, oh, we're the ones who kind of wrote this to start with, right? We're part of it.
Right.
Yep.
Well, what if we said either party may, may propose within two years? As long as there's an operation within two years. In fact, if the town wants to prepare a draft, it certainly would, but we couldn't just wait.
The town's not ready to.
We don't see how you'd create a document unless we actually have specifics of the development.
Well, again, it's, we're talking about after, after final approval of the Chatham Park PDD, which is a document that is, that we sit here today, is probably fifty percent completed, so we have, you know, a lot of time between then and.
No, my only, what I'm trying to say, my only point is, is that until we actually know what kind of root paths we're dealing with, I don't, I don't know how we come up with the specifics of a development plan for them to react to. In, in a way, we need, we need more development information to kind of feed the development agreement, and there is, is, um, we can generate a document, call it a development agreement, but I don't know if it actually speaks to the nuts and bolts of the development. Well, and the PDD will, if it is approved this evening, will be complete. The PDD will be done. The PDD includes an obligation of the developer to perform eleven or twelve additional items. So we, this PDD requires and demands, obligates the developer to perform, and that's what we want, you know, is for them to perform.
And I would agree that with respect to completion of the master plan, you're absolutely right, but with respect to the development agreement, that's a separate, distinct document that's going to drive, uh, what occurs on this development, uh, over the next thirty to forty years. And, and I do want the town to have the responsibility to take the lead in this. So, where should we proceed from here?
Pull the board.
Commissioner Guko suggested we poll the board on this topic, uh, but what I'll, how I'll frame the poll is, do you support or not support, do you support the proposed change that I made, or do you support leaving the language as it is in the current document? So, Commissioner Farrell, do you support the change that I recommended?
I support, uh, leaving it as the document is.
Commissioner Foley, do you support the change that I recommended?
I support the change.
Commissioner Guko, do you support the change that I recommended?
I do not support the change.
Commissioner Baldwin, do you support the change I recommended?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Turner?
No.
Yeah. It's just consensus. It's against them. Any other questions the board has?
All right, now, I have a board. I'm not sure if I can answer all my two years, but was that great that two years on this agreement is, if it's approved or not, the next vote or deny or whatever, not one, is that correct? The date is not.
So what happens if you continue to purchase property and you come back with orders, that we have to go through this process again? Does it then again also begin at that point? Because at one point, that every time you add land to Chatham Park, that we're going to go through this process again? Is that correct?
It would, it would be up to your board as to what you approve or is not approved. Correct. Even if it were whether or not it's in the market.
But my, my point is, does the two-year period start over every time we go through this? Every time you add land, every time you add land to Chatham Park?
It depends on what the master plan says, that you approve. It doesn't have to say that. It can say something else.
Unless it's written out.
With the master plan, we're giving two years to do certain items. If those items are all completed, certainly that. If those items are all completed, certainly that, and a new master plan would not include that two years. If we've got all the additional elements done, there wouldn't be any reason for that two-year to wait. And it's our intention to have all of those documents, all those additional elements, finished as quickly as we possibly can finish them. We hope to be very timely in that. I'm working on the schedule of June 9th. The issue that was raised, it was the matter of the penny lawsuit that caused it to be non-appealable. Yes, sir, it does start the clock in this case, as of this, as of the vote. But that is not what we're trying to do. We're not trying to move things out. And if the board, if we ever came back with more land, which my understanding is right now, we're not looking at additional land. And one of your planning board members is even suggesting maybe UDO needs to look at some changes in the procedure for how to make amendments to the master plan, which may come up. But yes, two years, no, it's not our intention. And if we did add other land, the board would certainly, we would hope to have all that stuff, those two years, all those items done, so that we can get moving. What that two years is giving us right now is the 5%, the 15%, only up to that two years. We haven't been able to move that quickly on these items. We'd like to move on, knowing that we have a certainty of doing these things within these next two years.
Thank you. Make a motion that we approve.
I have one question. One real thing. In reference to the agreement that we had, in reference to certain funding that you would be presenting to the town, I think it was, I'm not sure, bigger, say 300,000. We need to know whether you intend to keep that particular agreement.
Well, that contract is in place.
That contract is in place. I just thought it was associated with the previous one that we had.
I just want to say one thing, I'm not going to be able to sleep, live with myself if I don't say this. We have another opportunity to protect some of those important natural areas that I might believe should be done before we, we agree to this PDD ordinance and not through the small area plans. We're not doing enough to protect our drinking water, and I don't seem to have the support of the board, but I wouldn't be able to live with myself if I didn't take a stand for it. That's, I, I think we're making a mistake.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance in the town of Pittsburgh zoning map for case REZ 2014-04 with the amended exhibit B.
Before I entertain the motion, I have additional questions. Or comments. As I'm going through the consistency statement provided by the planning board, make the observation, makes a reference to a comprehensive plan, consistency with a comprehensive plan, point out that the town does not have a comprehensive plan.
Yes, sir, it does. With a little C, yes, it does. It always has.
Not to my knowledge, I've, I've been working in this town for, well, several, eight years, I've, I've never seen a comprehensive plan. I, I know what a comprehensive plan looks like, I've read comprehensive plans.
We can have this discussion outside. The town has a comprehensive plan, with a little C.
Planning board also said that they found the PDD document and master plan to be consistent with the land use plan. I think that can be demonstrably shown that it's, in fact, not consistent with the land use plan, either in terms of protections of the Haw River, or the densities that are postulated. They said that it's reasonable, considering the size and location of property, subject to the proposed rezoning. I think that's questionable. Says that the proposed rezoning provides quality design features. I know that the developer's claiming to do that, but I, there's not enough of a master plan there to make a determination of whether there's quality design features or not. Credits the master plan with sensitivity to environmental issues. I think that, that statement boarders on the ridiculous. Advances the public health, safety, welfare of the town of Pittsburgh. I'm not sure how they determine that. In their written recommendation to the town of Pittsburgh. Again, it says, the proposed rezoning is reasonable considering the size and location of the property. I would disagree with that. Again, quality design features, sensitivity to environmental issues, advances public health and safety. With all due respect to my colleagues on the planning board, I'm not sure that I agree with much of what they put in their recommendations. And in the acceptance resolution that Mr. Fioke has moved, that we adopt. So the application is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Again, I question whether or not we have one. Including the land use plan. Again, I say that one could make a reasonable argument that it's not consistent with the land use plan, either in terms of the protections of the Haw River, the density, or the amount of recreation and open space provided. There's a whereas here. This is whereas, the board of commissioners has determined that the amendment to the zoning's map, proposed application advances the public health and safety and welfare of the town. I don't see how such a determination can be made based on my reading of the master Accordingly, I would ask that the board entertain changing the signature line of this resolution to read, "Mayor pro tem," because this is not a resolution that I'm prepared to fix my signature to. I think it has misrepresentations of material facts, and therefore, if approved, I won't sign it. I defer to Commissioner Baldwin, if she's comfortable signing it. As Mayor pro tem, she's certainly welcome to these.
I'm not sure why we spent so many years creating a land use plan when first of all it comes along, and we just say, oh, well, changes happen. It's just, it isn't working. I'm not sure why we bothered.
Okay, if there are no other questions, Commissioner Fioke has made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? Four. Motion passes. And Madam Clerk, I'd ask that you change the document that was likely to be signed by the Mayor pro tem. I'm going to be as brief as possible, because I know everyone is relatively exhausted at this point. You can call me up with questions later. If you wake up in the middle of the night, just wait till about 6:30 and call me in the morning. So Jordan Lake Partnership, we, we've discussed this for several years now. Comelation of that is our two regional water supply plants that have been submitted to the state of North Carolina. They're actually award-winning due to the collaboration with partners. And briefly, I'm going to discuss the background of the partnership, the intake feasibility study, and the next steps. So the background, as you're well aware, Piedmont has a large area of growth projection through 2060. So the partnership got together in 2009, and we worked through a long process of vetting each other's water supply demands, water conservation methods, purchase agreement opportunities, interlocal agreement opportunities, drought management. And we did a model to show how droughts in the past would affect Jordan Lake with our moving forward demand on the lake. And we were able to prove that it would not have a significant impact on the lake with all of the droughts we've modeled that go back in history, including droughts in the 50s and the 40s. So the state's reviewing all that currently. So then we submitted a allocation application. The subset of the partnership is Chatham County, Durham, Owassa, and Pittsburgh, Orange Water and Sewer Authority. What, what's going on currently is, let me catch up to that slide, excuse me. That's funny, right there. The, these four entities got together as a subset of the partnership and said, you know what? We should get together and look at a regional intake and water treatment plant on the property that Owassa owns, and run the numbers, do the engineering feasibility study, based on the allocations that went in from each government to DNR. So there's the, there's the schedule. Keep going, please. There we go. So the interesting part of this graph is Pittsburgh is a zero for current, and we're applying for six million gallons a day. We've applied for a level one, which means more immediate, for three million gallons a day, and a level two for the following three million gallons a day. Again, you can ask me questions about specifics later, but I think I'll just kind of roll them through these numbers. Okay? So the idea is we stay ahead of the demand curve, which is the radius line here. And in this case, we hit approximately 2040, where we'd have to build a plant even larger. So however, the, the far left is 2020. We've been talking about, actually, that's going to slide out away from 2020 to 2025, or maybe 2030, because there's other ways all of these governments can put off the large price tag of building this plant with purchase contracts and other interconnections and other things we don't even know about yet, so we can push off the ultimate construction of this, because it's a large, large project. But in the end, we all need this water, so we all have to start planning, we believe, immediately. Okay? So part of the planning effort is to look at what our average day totals are for what's called the initial capacity. And as you can see, Chatham County has an initial capacity of six and a half, Durham 16 and a half, and on down. Orange County's actually not part of this anymore. They, they, they don't need it, but that's a, that's a detail we can talk about later. So we're asking for three. So, okay, so part of that planning, thank you, part of that planning is going to be, well, let me, I'm getting ahead of myself. We, we've looked at three alternatives, and the, the highest and best value alternative is to build one plant on the Owassa property for all to share with the finished water. So alternative one was selected. Alternative two is two plants, and the second plant would be in Durham. So we would pump raw water to Durham, and they would treat it at another plant, and the plant on the shores of Jordan Lake would be operated by Chatham County and town of Pittsburgh only. Alternative three is raw water goes to all communities non-treated, with the exception of Pittsburgh and Chatham County. And I, and these graphs show, the red box at the bottom shows the Chatham-Pittsburgh plant with, with two, two other plants. This is the alternative three. The raw would go to Owassa and Durham, and they would treat it in their own facility. So there'd be only one, construction of one plant, which would be the Chatham-Pittsburgh plant. Okay? So 33 MGD would be the capacity of the first phase of the plant, and it would be expanded to 54 when the time came. The partnership has agreed that we don't want to really start talking about dates anymore, because we don't really know yet. It's a sliding scale. Okay? So there, there's relative numbers on the left. Pittsburgh is 9% of the total. So whatever the numbers are, we're 9% of that number. For, that's for the intake, the lift stations, and the water treatment plant, but then we've got other costs built in that, well, that are not built in. Once the water reaches the town limit, this, that's our, that's an additional cost that we haven't calculated yet. Okay? Those are, those are the gross numbers, and millions of dollars for each alternative going down the line here. So alternative one, and there are capital costs only, so for the first phase, 33 million is $243 million, approximately 1940, or 2040. And then an additional 74 million for the final phase in 2060, or 2045, actually. Those dates show the end year of that build. So again, these are, these are rough numbers from an engineering feasibility study that only used best available data, and it's obviously subject to a lot of adjustment and change at moving forward in the planning. Okay? There's the recommended study. It's the lowest cost. Everyone gets treated water from the same facility, and it gets pumped out to all the communities. A part of all of this would be interconnection, interconnectivity. So we would, we would try to reduce the actual amount this plant can handle in the initial phase. The feasibility study looked at kind of a worst-case scenario. So the plant doesn't have to be 33 MGD at the initial phase, but that's just where we're at with the feasibility study. But in any case, this method is the least cost and the least environmental impact due to the number of pipelines that go out. So year one, out to year 25. Year one is when we would begin our, our next meeting, essentially, where we talk about policy and technical planning. And what is policy and technical planning? Let me just finish the, the rest of these. So there's a strategy on this time, this Gantt chart, to show how things would happen in year seven or eight, in year five or six, the plant would start getting constructed, and it would be operational in year seven. So what we would like to do, that's the original version, can you go ahead and go to the next one? Here's the revised version of what we'd like to do immediately, is we haven't developed these ILAs yet, these interlocal agreements, but we're talking about that amongst the partnership to at least start an agreement, start talking about two committees, one's policy, one's technical. And the policy committee talks about everything from financing to what kind of legal and institutional type of formula this could be. Is it owned by one? Is it owned by Durham? Is it owned by Chatham County? Do we all own it? Is it operated by one, and it's paid in by others? Is it, is it a regional water authority? You know, there's a lot of areas that this could go. The technical committee's looking at the water quality, the, the call, the drill down into the, the technical aspects of the water quality, and what would this plant do to clean our water? I mean, how, how we would use technology to clean the water to the level that we want, based on what we're finding in the lake. So it would, it would include monitoring. So, it would include monitoring. The state's monitoring now, but we think we need to do more monitoring for this piece. And seek concurrence on institutional framework. So, this would be a collaborative effort between the Jordan Lake partnership, ultimately committees if that's what's decided, and then all the elected bodies of government, which would be, likely be part of these committees. But also, we go back to the boards for decision-making as we move forward, especially on institutional framework and the schedule and the timing. And identify how all of our supply needs can be met, no matter what we end up doing. We always have to keep watching. How are we going to meet the water demand? No matter what we decide, we have to have an answer for how are we going to meet the demand. Okay? So, that's what I have in a nutshell, and I apologize for flying, but most of this is repeat information for you. Be happy to take any questions or comments.
Any questions from the board?
I'd like to get a copy of the presentation.
Sure.
Also included in our packet was this document, which was talking about this topic. And it says that incrementally, the town will increase its existing water treatment plant capacity from two to six MGD from the hall in the next 15 years.
Estimated.
Estimated. Yeah. Any required action on the towns are in order to secure an allocation from the hall of two, six MGD.
We would have to get a permit to increase our plant size treatment. Yeah, that's the permit we would need.
But nothing regarding quantity of water this can extract?
No, we have that.
Great.
We have up to 8.91.
Thank you.
Sure.
Carries us to our added new business number five.
We're usually going from eight to 10, sometimes eight to 11. You just call and sit and sit there. It was three of us. One of the guys.
How come you were not 10?
No, eight to 10.
Nancy still here?
I was wondering where you were going on.
If you might just come up before, I don't know. I have a question. Everybody likes to give you a bird's eye view of your discussion. Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank Nancy for her report. I think it's very thorough, and it paints the picture that I expected it to. We all know that when the townsons operation closed, it had a serious negative impact on the town and on Nancy's. So, we're running the red in terms of our revenues and our enterprise fund back in fiscal year 2012. That continued in '13 and '14, and it continues this year. I think the number this year is, it's not showing on your chart, but I think it's about 220,000. So, we're now pushing after four years, a million dollars in red ink in the enterprise fund. We did do a modest rate increase with the budget that we're now operating under, and as part of that, we agreed to discuss again in December whether or not a mid-year increase would be appropriate. In Nancy's memo, she talks about paying to visit the UNC. I think Mr. Bruce Beck may have gone whether there and working with the office there that has the capability to help folks who are struggling with out of sets and maintain water rates and keep a utility profitable. And I'm happy that they're doing that, but I don't think it's going to, I think they could need to continue working on that. It'd be very important for our budget operations that we do in April, May, and June. But tonight, I want to at least give the board an opportunity to, if you're inclined to stop the bleeding on the red ink, you know, we put $220,000 from the general fund into the enterprise fund, and what I've given you here is two opportunities, or two options where you could effect a mid-year rate increase. One of them is, would be a 9% across the board of just the usage rates, or the other one would be, and that 9% would get us to a rate structure roughly that would get us out of the red ink and slightly into the black ink. If you're not comfortable going all the way to profitability at this juncture, you want to take a half step. I'm giving you that opportunity with a 4.5% increase. That means, so let me kind of slow down a little bit. We've augmented the enterprise fund with $220,000 this year. And as we sit today, we've probably spent $110,000 of that. If we want to spend another $110,000 between now and the end of the fiscal year, we can leave the rates as they are. If we want to stop that red ink totally, we could do a 9% increase and not lose that $110,000 in the second half of the year. If we wanted to sort of incrementally step up on it, we could do a 4.5, and instead of losing the whole $110,000, we would lose $55,000 again in red ink in the enterprise fund between now and the end of June. So, what I've prepared were two ordinances that would actually amend the existing budget and change the water sewer rates. Ordinance A is a 4.5% increase. Ordinance B is a 9% increase. And you can see on this sheet what that, the general impact of that, if you just pick, use the 4.5 first. If in-town rates existing for the shortest, the smaller users are about, let's just say $5.60 per thousand gallons, a 4.5 increase would take that up about 20 cents to 4.80. If you were to be more aggressive, then we'd take it up, we could go to the 9% increase. It would take that 4.60 up about 40 cents per thousand to $5. And you can go across and see what the impact would be. You know, of course, out of town, then it'd be a, that impact would be awful for water. And on the sewer, let's see here, sewer rates. The sewer rates are the ones on the right side of the page, so. Increase there is also, let's see, from 6.90 to 7.20, so about 30 cents to the small user for a 4.5% increase, or about 60 cents per month for a 9% increase. So, again, I thought it was important that we at least have the discussion. You know, if the board has no appetite for an increase at this time, I certainly understand that. We can go and discuss it further in our retreat. And we could let Nancy finish her work with the folks at UNC to help us better understand rate setting and how we can get to be, or no longer not profitable. But I thought it was important to at least have the discussion tonight, so. If there are any questions about what I've prepared here, I'd be happy to answer them and open the board, open the discussion to any other board members who'd like to comment.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you for digging into us. I certainly appreciate it and have experienced the bleeding that you've referenced with the loss of townsons. I liked your idea of letting Nancy make a presentation to us on the 12th after consulting with school government. And it dovetails into what I was hoping to talk about, that last item for budget calendar, and that is, we'll talk about it again when we get there, but I'd like for us to change the date of our retreat on the 10th to the 17th. We have a meeting January 12th, and we'll receive this presentation and do other business that the town has. That's a Saturday, January 10th, so I'd like, isn't it?
It's tentative.
The tentative, that, we were, one iteration actually had that taken out of there. The 10th is a date that we just talked about, but the 10th is not actually a date.
Well, oh, there is a date. We can't, I'm sure about that.
In my comments, I was going to do is try to nail the dates down in case if you have some dates.
I was going to find out with the 17th. I think.
We're doing it in January. I was going to try to get to that.
Well, I don't need to nail the date down, but I was just hoping to not have our retreat prior to this presentation, so that was my objective.
Well, it would just mean, I think, that we have to back the retreat a little bit later into January.
Yeah.
Which, Monday is the morning to King Holiday gives us three days.
The 19th.
The 19th. So, that's probably, folks are traveling, I don't think you might want to avoid that weekend.
If I could, just, I'm sorry, David Wong is available on the 31st and the 3rd of January, if you want to be looking in January. He has other dates available in February.
Just to remind the board that I walk on Saturdays, and I, it's very difficult for me to take time off on Saturdays, so just to remind you of that.
And I appreciate that. I always chose Saturdays because from the standpoint, we've done it on Saturdays in the past, certainly if you want us to entertain other dates.
You should do one there.
Is that correct?
I think so. I think you get the most out of it if you, you know, it takes at least six or seven hours to give a productive session, I think.
Yeah. Yeah. And too, there's some other organizational things up that we try to cover with this too, so. If you want to, if you want to consider, eight hours probably is more than enough time to at least begin by the rest of the management structure.
Two possibly, and two evening. That's often Monday and Thursday.
How many times I'll take Monday?
In between workdays, pick the off week from a month.
So, our meetings in January are the fall from the 26th, so if you know, if Monday is the 19th.
That's the holiday.
That's the holiday. I don't think you can see this one right now.
Let's see here, one, two, three, four, this is, five.
They didn't vote by this year.
They got, they went off on this tangent.
So, how do we, been a suggestion that we pick February 2nd? How does everybody's count though, for that day?
I think we're going to.
I've got the conflict.
Okay, what time would you like to do?
Eight in the morning.
Eight to four.
February 2nd.
We get eight thirty to five, eight thirty to four, thirty, eight thirty until we fall before exhaust.
And too, I'd have to just say that I need to check on Mr. Wong. I just want with Saturdays.
So, now we've got that nailed down, back to the other subject. I think I got the gist of where you were headed. You'd rather defer this decision until Nancy's had a chance to.
I'd rather review this later when she's had that.
Okay. Mayor Holder, you trying to get my attention?
Yes, I just wanted to weigh in on this water issue. If you allow me for one second.
Water issue?
What you were just discussing.
Oh, the rates.
Yes, yes, yes.
More of an entertainment discussion from our former mayor. Come on up to the podium, sir.
As I follow, it is the same discussion we've had many times, and Mr. Mayor Terry's put together good information. I just wanted to ask the board that, to consider now that we've had a change in the county, and that I presented information at their CIP plan, and I was able to talk to Commissioner Hales on the way out, they fully expect that we might come forward with a letter again requesting cooperation and to look at the opportunity for the town and county to cooperate in water. That's all. This has been brought up probably three times in the past, including when Mayor Terry was the manager, but I think it might be a good opportunity to revisit it again.
Okay, so I think that, I think I hear a consensus that we prefer not to take any action on this tonight, take some time to digest the material, and give Nancy a good opportunity to do a work with UNC.
You don't have to. You can do something now, right? Consulted. Revisit the secret. That's all.
End of the third quarter of.
Fair synopsis of where we are.
Okay, thank you. So, that took care of, actually, we took care of old business number five and new business number two, we scratched that off. Last thing here, shouldn't take a great deal of time. I got an inquiry from Pat Richardson, who is with the retirement community at Farrington, and she asked that since Mr. Foley has rotated off of their board, she wants to know if we can provide another representative from the town board to fill that seat, so if we have any volunteers, happy to hear about that tonight. And that you can maybe talk to, speak to, the time commitment that that would entail.
It'll probably be different this year than it was when I was on the board. We created a website, which took quite a bit of time, but I think now it's a monthly meeting. There is going to be an event that whoever serves will be expected to be, play a big part in that, bring the potential retirees in Pittsboro, and also to occasionally attend trade shows, different parts of the country. If you choose to go. I hope the weekend, that would be a problem for me in the future, I mean, people that can go. Some of them will love it. And you recall that those, North Carolina's powers designates, designates three different tiers based on areas of need in terms of economic development assistance. Chatham County is kind of the least, so to speak, in terms of it being a tier three. That's continued for 2015. Just as an informational piece, in case that discussion ever comes up, if you're cocktail parties or what have you, or if we ever have to actually seek economic development assistance, we're kind of at the lower end of the totem pole. That's a good thing, a bad thing, it's a good thing that it shows that there's been a help from our area. It's bad in terms of seeking, you know, seeking state assistance to space that need. However, to this point, we seem to be doing well in that regard anyway. So anyway, just for your information, this might be, just like the piece says. Second thing that I would point out is there was a piece, there was an issue brought or asked of us just recently regarding construction on US 15501 or Hillsborough Street, and I think we just kind of briefly mentioned that in particular was Hillsborough Street going to be improved or widened or what have you. And I did include a copy of the piece from the statewide transportation improvement program, or STIP, on future 15501, 15501 construction. And it appears as if they have that planned, the DOT has that planned in 2019. So that, those things can change up or down, later, maybe earlier, but in any case, that's what the status is. We also included FYI update for some clearing associates regarding the status of Unified Development Organs Project, or DDO. You recall from, I think, our previous retreat session that we work on this post-pace and provide you updates on that, and we have demo update there we can provide you, I think, if you have any other questions on that. Certainly feel free to ask, as you can see, they've been busy and basically an information gathering point, and we're probably going to be going to the public boards shortly to the floor. The only other things that I would mention would be that we had, as you're aware, a trend update on watering break that we had on Chatham Forest Drive on Thanksgiving Day of all dates. Crew was there all day, did an excellent job, Chief Crutchfield also up pitched in a little bit, thankfully didn't get down into the trench, at least as far as I know. So we followed up since then with clean-up and replaced, there's some damage with the driveway, and we've done our best to replace the driveway and the C and so forth. So kudos to our utilities crew in working on a day that really wasn't very pleasant and was a holiday. Also too, we received a letter regarding speaking of nickel and leather, received an email questioning or wondering about the town's policies and practices as far as snow removal is concerned. I know that Mr. Terry provided a response to that, and he was after it and right on it, and that with, you know, an apartment, utilities department in the southeast maybe isn't as well equipped to deal with a massive or a big snow event like you can see in certainly areas of north. But we do our best. In the time since then, I've talked to Mr. Potte a little bit more, and he does have a snow removal policy that he's been, that he's been working on and updated, and if, unless you think it's absolutely not recommended or necessary, I'd probably bring that to your attention at an upcoming meeting. It just kind of goes through how we can go about, how we can go about actually having a snow, a snow event in town, and probably get your reaction on that, so you're fully aware and informed of how it is we go about it. Certainly, there are other things that we can do probably after that, whether we consider purchasing new equipment, which isn't my first option at all, or we engage in private contractors, which in some is, actually, that Mr. Potte has, has department as well, and so we may be looking for outside of private help on some of those, some of those streets. So we'll continue to work on that. It's a legitimate concern, and, you know, just because we're somewhat limited doesn't mean we can't at least try to improve on it. We've also had some, as you guys are aware, the leaves are now pretty much almost all fallen, and it's fallen a lot of them down. The, we did have some, as discussed in the previous meeting, we did have some issues with equipment that appears to be getting fixed, but in the meantime, or has been fixed, but in the meantime, we are planning to catch up again, and we had anticipated and actually working over the weekend, but on Saturday with the rain, Mr. Potte didn't feel like it was, it was going to be time well spent, so we're planning on being out there all four days this weekend if necessary, a hot day really this weekend if necessary, on the, on the weekend as well. So if you do get complaints or concerns, please let us know. It'll be hard, working pretty hard to address them. And with that, I guess I would, I guess I would stop and continue to question how much you have.
Questions for the manager?
One comment, or question, comment, I'm looking forward to the co-assessment that I think is beginning or mid-January. And just, I have signed up for the email notifications, and I have not received anything, and I'm just wondering, is the system working?
Okay, EDC updates, I don't have anything, any report on that? Anything in their review?
I would say, slowly they canceled another meeting.
Okay.
I still get the emails because they still have somebody, and I know, I'm glad they're just, they're great. They're certainly interested in trying to be alternative.
Okay.
It's every other month, the first month. They really, they have enough. And it's the committee that actually, they develop, they discuss it together, and they do.
Yeah, that could get re-energized with the new county board, and they like to pick up the pace on that. Okay, anything from the fairgrounds?
Not at this time.
Downtown PBA?
There is a meeting this Wednesday, I'll attend, and if there's any pressing issues, I'll send it out by email.
I will say that the first unit had something, and I was really impressed at how many numbers they have now, this old mall.
The PBA?
Yes, instead of the little tiny ones.
Yeah, no, the PBA has been growing steadily and is energized, so I think they're doing a great job.
Okay, that brings us to commissioner concerns. Commissioner Farrell.
Goodness, not a concern, I just want to let everybody know, I know we had said something about the parade being on First Sunday, I think they had said something about it, but I, when I walked back, I stopped by a couple of the vendors and spoke with them about them, and the three to four ladies that I spoke to, they were real pleased with it being on the, they had a parade because they said they had one of their busiest days. So that was, they didn't have any problem with the parade, you know, extra people coming into town itself. That's all.
I speak in part of all that, because there's a lot of people when I'm walking there.
Okay.
I speak in part of all that, because there's a lot of people when I'm walking there.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Foley?
I just wanted to follow up on one of the things we talked about at the mid-year retreat that we did, and we talked about part of Chatham Park's review of small area plans, and that we were going to try to make progress on that, so I was just wondering if we are making progress, and is that being intended to?
Yeah, Mr. Bass has collected some information on other examples from other communities, and is putting something together, and we should have something to say.
Mr. Baldwin?
The only thing that I have is, of course, this, I just wanted to mention this news release from Duke Energy concerning the coal ash and their happening community information event, one in Lee County, December tenth, and the other in Chatham County on December eleventh. And that's all for now.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I don't have anything.
Okay, I've got a couple of quick ones, one of them's a repeat. I wonder if, between the chief and the engineer, if we could revisit the issue of the missing stop sign, or stop sign that was never installed at the end of Millbrook, in the corner of Millbrook and Freeman. If you go down to Freeman, if you go down Millbrook Drive in Powell Place, every cross street has stop signs going both ways, they go onto Millbrook. But the north end of Freeman Drive was just built out in the last year, and for whatever, it was just trees, nobody bothered to put a stop sign, "It's your coming." South on Freeman, you intersect Millbrook, you're going on Millbrook, you don't have to stop, if you're coming to South on Freeman, you don't have to stop, and that's, that's not safe. So I don't know whether Fred needs to bring the attention of Bryson Powell, or somebody does, and maybe get that stop sign put there, of course, if a tour happens. And I'll be here with the board, and Commissioner Foley can verify this, that there's no, we both are on the Powell Place, what do we call it, listserv message board, whatever, where the citizens out there can exchange comments and questions. And it's been a real hot topic lately, again, is traffic on, traffic and parking on Millbrook. And I don't have any recommendations tonight, just a alert to the board that you may be hearing from the Powell Place HOA. I don't know that there's consensus, I'd rather think probably like it is, to, yeah, to, you know, kill parking on both sides of the street, widen the street, and there's as many opinions as there are people who posted the website, but it's, that's quite a few people who think it's a safety hazard, and if you go out there and spend any time, you'll see that it really has become a distance. It's like the old country bridges that are on the way, you know, you just, it's a common courtesy everybody has learned, and when you're, when you're going in, you kind of have the right of way, but when you're going out, somebody's coming, you need to pull over and stop to let them pass through, so.
The problem is that the curve, you know, fluffing the, well, like bridges didn't have curves on them.
Yeah, there are at least two curves there.
There's somebody in your lane, what do you do?
Yeah, there's two curves where the sight distance is really bad, and so don't be surprised if the Powell Place HOA brings that to the board here in the near future. And just on a personal note, I'm going to be traveling out of town from Wednesday to Friday this week, and wish happy holidays to everybody, be traveling out of town for the holidays as well. Going to be taking my entire family to Kirk, Turks and Caicos for Christmas from the twenty-second to the twenty-eighth. My spouse recently retired and saved her last six or eight paychecks to treat the family to a holiday in the Caribbean, so be looking for me at Powell Place from the twenty-second to the twenty-eighth. Okay, that's all I have. Merry Christmas and.
One other comment, I'm, and Mr. Baldwin reminded me of it, I plan to attend the Chatham County version of the Duke Energy meeting, and I inquired from Commissioner Turner whether or not she was going to attend. However, she's unavailable, because she is seemingly good in a moment, thank you.
Good morning, yes.
So congratulations.
Yes, I thought, just one more comment, and I'll be very brief, I was thinking, you guys might say something about it, but on behalf of staff, on behalf of my place on staff, I'd like to extend a wholehearted thanks to your staff for organizing the parade. It was Paul Horn especially for delivering the weather, which I think is all possible. Everyone on staff, I think, everyone who pulls a paycheck to the Chatham Biscero, I think, played a little bit of a part in that parade, and I think it came off really well. We were already talking this morning about things to improve it for next year. Thanks to Chief Crutchfield for bringing in help from the county, and so I think it's not only a Biscero event, but what's been happening is it seems to be more of a, somewhat of a regional event as well. The guys at Augusta say that it might be the most popular Christmas party in Chatham County. Anyway, thanks very much to staff for that, and in the moment as well.
Thank you for letting us use the golf cart.
Yeah.
Nice drive.
Yeah. Well said, Mr. Manager, and I think we all agree, it was a great, great event, and the only downside, the only downside that I recall was that Santa Claus put at least three of us on it.
Leave those camera phones in your pocket, that's all I heard.
Okay, okay, they're being, for their business, they're pushing to adjourn.
Second.
All favor.
I have.
Mayor adjourned.